So the, um, the minutes in the agenda are out there on the shared drive. Uh, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. And I'll ask, is there, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes or agenda or any discussion?
I'll motion to make the approval. Oh, you, yeah.
Okay.
You want to take notes?
And.
I'll make that motion.
I need, I, I need to get a piece of paper and make notes here because Matt is not online yet either. Get a piece of scratch paper, something I can write on. Okay. So Dana has made a motion to approve the minutes and agenda. Is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, minutes and agenda are approved. Stuff here. Um, and I had sent, uh, an email earlier this month with the goal questionnaire document. Anybody have any problem finding that on the shared drive?
Nope, I got it.
Alright, uh, so next thing on the agenda is just the, uh, update, uh, the discussion with the trustees. I met with the, uh, trustees a couple of weeks ago. They had a meeting in Kenset. And I met with them, told them what it is that the zoning commission is doing right now with regard to, um, the updates of the development plan and our desire and supervisor's recommendation to work with the trustees to form a larger committee, uh, when we start really going into the work of developing the new goals and strategies and so on. Um, and their response was that they believed that we should limit that, um, that committee to just one trustee per township as opposed to all of the trustees at large. Um, so I wanted to, um, bring that information to you guys. Uh, and then based on their desire, I guess I would recommend that what we do is, um, send a letter, well, actually it was their recommendation, um, for the selection of the trustee that, um, each township determine which trustee is going to participate in this process. Um, so I propose that I would send a letter to the township clerks and let them know what's going on, when the next meeting would be, uh, that we would want to engage the trustees and ask them to select a trustee and then provide us the contact information for who that individual is by a certain date in advance of our next meeting. Um, so you guys have any thoughts on, um, just the one, one trustee from each township? And, uh, asking the clerks to tell us who that might be?
What was their reasoning for limiting, limiting it to one? Just to have a smaller committee or so that? Because it's harvest or?
One for a smaller committee, two, they just didn't feel that a group that large was gonna be able to get very much accomplished. Because again, what we're, what we're asking for is, is a group that would, you know, initially, um, uh, develop goals. So it would be the, uh, the zoning commission and a representative from each township that would come up with an initial draft of goals after we do the evaluation of, uh, of the prior goals. And then, you know, we're still gonna get full public input on those kinds of things. So, yeah, everybody's gonna have a say in it, that they thought that just the, uh, the committee to make decisions and get stuff started, uh, was sufficient with just one trustee per township. So if there's, uh, no other questions or concerns about that, then I'll draft a letter, uh, send it to the, the trust, the township clerks and ask them to let us know who the trustee representative will be. Now, one of the things we'll have to put in the letter is when we want them to, you know, when, when do we want to meet, uh, as, as a committee for that first time? I think we're not gonna be able to do a lot for refinement or development of new goals until after we get the surveys completed and find out what people think about how well the county has accomplished the goals, you know, from, from the original plan. So I don't think that we need to meet with them, you know, and over the, the course of the, uh, in the course of October. Your thoughts on that? Yeah, I think it's gonna be a, a month for us to get the surveys out, get feedback from folks.
I think it'll be at least that, especially if we have to get re-involved in the wind ordinance again.
Yep. Yeah, and that, that's another topic I wanted to discuss with everybody, uh, with regard to, um, timing in our next meeting. But I just wanted to make certain that we didn't feel that we needed to engage with the trustees, you know, over the course of the next three or four weeks. You know, we can just get their names and then contact them once, once we've identified, you know, what the timing and meetings, meeting needs might be. Okay, so, um, Dana and Quisley didn't speak up, um, with alternative thoughts on that. So I presume everybody's good with that direction. So I'll just simply tell them that we need to know who they are. Uh, we don't anticipate that we'll need to meet with any of them or meet as a group, um, until sometime in November. And we'll reach out to them at the, at the time. Todd brought it up just a moment ago, so I'll, I'll talk about it now. I was gonna talk about it at the, uh, at the end of the meeting. But, um, in case you're not aware, the supervisors on Monday, uh, there was a motion to approve the standalone agreement with Invenergy for the worthwhile wind project, which would in effect, um, bypass the draft ordinance that we had submitted, um, simply because it hasn't been voted on by the supervisors yet. Um, and it would have bypassed existing zoning. Uh, it would have locked in Invenergy, um, to the terms articulated in the development agreement for the next 50 years, uh, with regard to the worthwhile wind and any upgrades to that project. That motion died for lack of a second, um, so there's no action on that agreement. Uh, supervisors did say that they are now finally going to take up the question of the ordinance. And so each of the supervisors this week are supposed to be reviewing the ordinance, uh, the draft ordinance, identifying what it is that they think, uh, should be changed in the ordinance. Um, I'll collect that information from each of the supervisors on Monday. And then I'll consolidate it. I'll take all of what they individually want to change. And I'll update a, 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 a version four draft, uh, of the ordinance. And in a redline version with all their changes in language that's appropriate to the ordinance, uh, just so that they have that language as, as reference and context. I'll create a separate document that is a list of all of the changes that each of them feel are necessary. Uh, I'll identify on that list which supervisor or multiple supervisors, um, have, have suggested that change. Uh, and the intent then is to bring that information to the zoning commission so that the zoning commission look at what each of the individual supervisors think need to be changed in the ordinance and provide an opportunity for the zoning commission, uh, to provide comment and feedback, uh, to those potential changes back to the supervisors. Um, after we do that, then the supervisors will use that second document that I've described, which is a list of all of the individual changes that they, um, might like to make. And they can discuss each of those changes, uh, individuals, discuss them as a group, discuss each change, uh, as a group, uh, in context with our recommendations, our, our comments. Uh, and then they'll vote, uh, as a board on each of those changes, an up or down vote for each of them. Once that process is done and we know which changes actually passed their vote, then we'll make a clean copy of the ordinance with those changes. And that's what the supervisors will then use to go forward, uh, with their public reading and ultimate vote, uh, for an ordinance. So our next meeting is scheduled for November 4th. It's harvest season. We know David has said he barely made the, made the call today. Uh, Justin, we know is probably still out in the combine somewhere. So I, I don't know if it's feasible for us to try to schedule something yet towards the end of October, middle part of October, or, you know, we just have this gap between when the supervisors say, here's all the things that we, we might want to change. And then, uh, zoning commission have an opportunity to, to look at that and provide feedback. So your guys' thoughts on, do we wait until November 3rd on our next scheduled meeting to do that? Or do we try to get a different meeting to do that?
I would assume if they get this done as quick as you say, the supervisors, as far as the implementing the, their wishes and desires in there, the sooner we all get it, the better. I, I don't know that really has to wait for a meeting. You're just gonna compile it and then we'll have an email or a document that we can start reviewing on our own before in the next meeting, whenever we have time.
Right, yeah, I, yeah, so I, I'll put it together, um, you know, take me a day or so, uh, after I get it from the supervisors, to make a redline version of the ordinance and to put that separate document together with a list of all of the changes. Um, certainly we want each of, uh, each of the commissioners', um, time to review that and consider, uh, what your comments are. It'll be, I don't, I don't know how many changes, um, these guys might want to come up with. Um, but we'll want to have a discussion, uh, amongst the commissioners on each of the things that the supervisors are, are suggesting changed. You know, presumably, we chopped through the, the ordinance, you know, we, 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 all of us decided that, um, you know, the, the text as a whole is what we thought was best for the county. We know the supervisors are gonna come back and say, well, we want to change this, we want to change this, we want to change that, which is certainly their prerogative to change. Uh, but AJ has said he wants to hear our feedback on what they're suggesting should change. And so we're gonna want to take the time to, um, to discuss what it is that they want to change and then come up with, what do we want to tell the supervisors about that? You know, I, I don't think that we want to simply say, well, we don't agree, we think it should be what it originally was, you know? Maybe on some of the stuff we do, but we might want to expound on why. Or we may come up with a third alternative that, that we want to suggest. Um, so my point is it, it, it's gonna be a working meeting, uh, to go through that stuff and then come up with the comments and feedback that we want to give them.
Is the concern actually having that as an, uh, agenda item? Is that what the concern is of, of actually getting a date?
No, it's just a question. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just, it's my question, you know, if the supervisors, I'm just gonna pull up my calendar here. You know, if the supervisors give us their list of concerns or list of, of, um, potential changes on the 11th, that's on a Monday, then that's, um, one, two, three, three and a half weeks, um, before we have our meeting, um, our, our next scheduled meeting. And so we wouldn't then be giving the stuff back to the supervisors for them to vote, uh, until after our meeting. So they'd be giving us their stuff on October 11th and they wouldn't get our stuff back to be able to have their discussion and vote, uh, until, uh, November 8th.
I, I don't think, I think that's a very. It's too short of time for this time of year to, in my opinion, get anything back to them. I think it's gonna take us more than a month plus our discussions together, you know, as, as a committee, to go through all of them together. To me, that's almost a two-month thing. I'm, I'm not trying to stretch it out. I'm just trying to be realistic about what time of year it is and how much information it potentially could be to change workout, you know what I mean?
And that, and that, that's one of my concerns as well and the, the big unknown. We don't know how many things that they might want to change. We don't know if our, uh, review and conversation on their potential changes, um, you know, is something that can be done over the course of one meeting or if it's gonna take a couple of meetings to do it.
Yeah, depending, it depends on.
You know, they may have a large volume.
Yeah, if they got one or two little things, we could probably do it as a group in one meeting. But if they have, if they take a knife to it, you know, it's gonna take us a couple of meetings.
Yep. David, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I, as far as I'm concerned, the, uh, the date is set for the November and I guess, uh, I, I, you know, and I'm speaking probably for Justin a little bit too. Uh, this next month is just not conducive for either one of us.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm probably gonna miss, you put a meeting in there, I'm probably gonna miss. So.
And, and to add to that, David, you know, I'm, I'm doing a lot of the same things you guys are 'cause the time of year, let alone my own personal stuff. And I doubt if they need a lot of changes in it. Uh, the likelihood of me over the next month even looking at it is very, very unlikely, depending on the weather.
Well, yeah, I, I, I told them already that, um, our next scheduled meeting is November 3rd and that I doubted that we would be able to pull a meeting together between now and then, um, to get anything back to them sooner, uh, than, than early November. So, um, I think that, you know, that, that marker is out there. And I, I haven't seen or heard any feedback from them, you know, with any pressure to try to get it done quicker. Um, but I did, you know, again, I, I wanted to ask you guys, you know, what your, what your thoughts are in timing. So we'll just, we'll stay with what I told them already about, uh, November 3rd is the first that we're gonna be able to take a look at it. So, um, that said, um, we have the review and decision on the goals survey. Uh, it's been out there for a couple of weeks. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to, um, to take a look at it. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that document? And the, uh, I mean, essentially all I did is I copied the goal statement straight out of the development plan. And then I just created that one through five scoring.
Made sense to me.
But does the, um, this, the, the scoring model that's listed on page one, that seem to work for you guys? Any thoughts on changes that might be necessary for it?
I think it looks good, Jeff.
Okay.
Uh, you know.
Okay.
No matter what you bring up for a survey, you're, you're always gonna forget something. So you're just kind of taking the plan and throwing it out there, so.
Right.
I'm just fine with it.
Okay, well, um, I will take this, um, survey, this questionnaire then. I will get it out to all of the county department heads. I will get it out to the folks that were, um, uh, involved in the original drafting. I'll get it out to each of the township trustees. Uh, I'll get an announcement, uh, in the paper, once we figure out how we're going to do the online survey aspect, uh, with a link for that. And I'll make certain that the auditor's office has paper copies, uh, so that folks can stop at the auditor's office and, and pick that up. And I'll make certain that that's announced in the paper as well. So sometime over the course of the next, uh, next couple of weeks, um, we should see this stuff hit the paper and, and start getting out to folks. I think we had talked before, we wanted to give plenty of time for people to, uh, to look at this and respond to it. So, um, do we want to set end of October? That, um, we'd like to have everybody do this so that, you know, I, I just, we, we need to establish some kind of a, um, a, a, a marker on the calendar so that we say, okay, this is the date that we're gonna presume the survey, uh, is closed so that we can collect the data and then start to digest it and, and figure out what it's actually telling us.
I'm just gonna, gonna throw that out, um, you know, can we pump this down the road if we're gonna try and work on the wind again? Um, you know, uh, my, this next month is just horrible for me, so I, I, you know. I, I'm just bringing it up, uh, I can't get both of them.
We just, yeah, so you're saying we just take a pause on this until, say, January?
Yeah, we're, yeah, you know, we're trying planning in December of, okay, yep, we want to have, you know, get the survey out at X date, et cetera, yeah.
Okay.
And to me, I think we gotta pause this until the wind's done.
Okay.
My opinion, but.
I think that's, that's a reasonable approach. Yeah, the other thing I would point out too though is, um, getting the survey stuff out to folks here in the next couple of weeks, um, and maybe leaving the survey period open till end of November, first part of December or something. That's really no work on us. Once we get the stuff out, then it's just collecting the information. Um, once, once we say, okay, this is the, the survey period is over and we collect the information, then it's just a matter of, um, really the, the, the work would be on my part to gather the data, put it together, you know, 'cause we, we gotta take the paper copies, we gotta take the survey stuff, we gotta take the, the stuff from the, um, the, the county departments and so on. Put all that stuff together, uh, and then start, you know, ga, you know, looking at the results, slicing and dicing the, the results so that we have something that's digestible. I think we can still do that this year. I don't think that's gonna be, you know, require any work from you folks. Um, the work from you folks and the trustee group is gonna be, once we have all that, so that we've got something to look at and say, okay, here's, here's the score, here, here are the results. And, and we can delay that aspect until December, January, um, for looking at the results and digesting it, to your point, David. But still get the survey stuff started.
Yeah, get it started, get it out to them. It isn't like we can't send them a reminder that, hey, we want this stuff now by a certain date later on.
Right.
And I guess I don't have a problem getting the survey started. But if we want to try and get the survey ended, I'm just gonna say by November 15th and then we gotta, you know, if it's, if, if, if we're pumping the, if, if we're, if we're being honest about saying, when the wind is done, then we can digest the survey and move on from, you know, with the trustees after that. That, the survey itself, you know, it's digesting it that I've, that I've kind of saying pause.
Right, yeah, so I, I, I'll go ahead and keep moving forward with the survey stuff. Um, and I'll say that the survey goes until the 30th of, of November. Um, and then I'll use the first part of December for me to gather the data, put it together, get it into some charts, um, you know, so that it makes sense. And, and, and I'll get that stuff out to you guys then by mid-December so that you've got time to look at it while you're, while, while everybody's, um, eating Christmas stuff and opening presents and so on. And then we can take a look at it maybe in January and, and actually start to look at the data.
Just a thought on that, because I don't know exactly who the trustees are everywhere, but everybody's in the same boat. Getting the surveys out there is one thing, but putting a date to have them back in already, uh, that's kind of going against what David's saying. And, and I understand that too, 'cause a lot of the people that are gonna count on these surveys for, they're in the same boat. They're, they're not even gonna look at it until December. So, I mean, you can get the stuff compiled, sent out, you know, so we can get our contact trustees information in. That's not a big deal. And so that they get all the surveys out to all the proper people. I just don't think we want to put a date on when we want them back yet. And I know you like to be organized that way, but if we do have a date that we have to have them back by, so that they have time, you know, and so they're not, they're not, it's not interfering with harvest and taxes, is what I'm saying. So that they actually do it. I know it's not that long of a survey, but it's just one more job this time of year. But I don't think we want to ask them to have done and back to us in November. 'Cause the, the people that's gonna get the survey is no different than everybody that's on this committee. Everybody, it's an agricultural community. It's fall. It's just not gonna happen.
Okay.
So getting it started, I'm totally in favor of, 'cause you're doing most of that. Um, and get it organized and started. I just, my gut, anyway, my opinion is kind of, kind of what David's saying. Uh, it's not just us, it's them too. It's just a bad time of year to expect decent results.
If we don't have an end date though, there's no point in sending it out till.
Right.
After the holidays at the rate we're going, so.
Right, but then if, if, if we do have to put a date on it, what I'm saying is it, it can't be November. It just can't.
Is it worth putting a date out there for December? Or do we just put the whole thing on the shelf, including starting on it until after the first of the year? Cause I, you know, the, end of November.
That's two months.
With heart, yeah, I mean, end of November with harvest and Thanksgiving, end of December with Christmas and New Years. You know, so it's, it's just a question, do we put the survey out there now and say the survey closes X day in December? Or do we say, we're just gonna put the whole thing on the shelf and we'll put something out in January and say, give us your information by the end of February?
I'm, I'm just talking out loud here, just ideas. I'm just throwing stuff out there. I don't see a problem with getting the survey out there, letting people know what it is. Here it is. Get it out there. I just don't.
Well, but again, when we do that, we have to. Well, we have, we have to tell them, you know, when, when we say we want you to do the survey, we have to have some kind of a end date to close. That end date can be a month away, two months away, three months away. Um, I'm just saying if we put it, whenever we put it out, we gotta give them an end date. So then the question is, if we put it out now, is sometime in December a good end date? Or if the answer is, well, sometime in December is not a good end date, then we say, okay, well, let's put the whole thing on the shelf and wait until January.
I, I personally, I, I know I'm probably saying this again and again, but to me, the first week of January is when the surveys are gonna get done. Or we should expect them back. Anytime before that, there's just family vacations. Anytime before that, there's just family vacations and Christmas and you, you know, there's just too many variables. COVID going to hit again. I mean, I, I'm not saying we can't put the whole thing off. Like you say, we can table it like what David said earlier. I, I, I'm just, I don't know.
I don't think you put it out there then now, Todd. That's twelve, thirteen, fourteen weeks for it to sit, sit out there. People are going to forget about it. It's got to be fresh.
I, I agree.
And I know Dana, you had mentioned earlier too of, of not giving them a long window, um, because people procrastinate, you know, when we talked about this last time, not giving them a long window, um, to do it.
Right. It'll get forgotten. So we either send it out now and we say you've got eight weeks or seven weeks for the end of November, or we sit on it till January and send it out and not get anything back for six, eight weeks then.
Okay. And in that case, my guts say table it, forget it for now.
Okay. Okay.
I just fear too, it'll get lost, lost in the holiday shuffle if we have it any time in there. So it's either now or beginning of the year, in my opinion.
Yep. Yep. David, any thoughts you have on tabling till January?
Well, that's, I think you'd want to get the survey out in the month of January. That gives you, you know, whether you make it three weeks, I wouldn't make it too long. But take it two, three weeks in January. That way you get to the first of February. Now we can, there shouldn't be much going on. Feb, March, you can kind of get some of this stuff done. That's the time you're going to get the committee.
Okay. All right. So we will, we'll table the goal, uh, the goals survey then until January. So when I send the letter out to the township clerk, uh, asking for the township trustee that's going to participate in this, uh, I'll let them know that we don't expect any work from them or need to meet with them, um, until sometime after January.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Um, so that said, the next meeting then, um, scheduled for November third is going to be pretty much dedicated to, um, back to wind ordinance stuff. So I'll get you everything that I can from what the supervisors, um, give me on their suggested changes. Um, like I said, it would take me a few days to put the stuff together. So probably be, um, late next week. I'll get that stuff out to you. So you've got a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, two and a half weeks, uh, to look at it.
All that's assuming the supervisors do get it.
Yeah.
And then I guess the suggestion I, to me, it'd probably be an in-person meeting then on that one.
Yeah, I think that might be best. You're right.
I'll say that again, in, when we.
In person.
Yeah. So when we do the, when we're looking at what the supervisors', um, changes that they're suggesting, that when we have our discussion on, well, what should our response to their changes be? Uh, David's suggesting that meeting, November third, uh, should be an in-person meeting. I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Where they tell us what, what they want for changes? No?
We'll get, we'll get next week, we're supposed to get what changes they think should be made. And so I'll consolidate that stuff. Get things out to you guys by the end of next week. And then our next meeting on November third is when we'll review that as a commission and say, all right, this supervisor wants to.
Oh, you're saying on a Zoom, us being in person, not with the supervisors? Okay. Cause I was just going to say, man, we just, I, I misunderstood. I understand now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, well, that's all we have on the agenda then. If nobody else has anything, um, is there a mo, well, does anybody else have anything? Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. The motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. And meeting is adjourned. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you on November third.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.